2017, it is 4:30 PM, we're in the Thomas Jason Council Chambers. This is a work session, so if you have not been invited tonight to speak, we're not taking public comments tonight. That will be next week at the council meeting. So we appreciate your participation tonight for coming down. We've got Mayor's Awards next week. We have a proclamation of retirement for Kent Powell and for Mark Cameron. Kent's got 25 years of service and Mark Cameron's got 37. Goodness gracious. It's a long time. Number three is recognition of council members Fleming, who's not with us tonight, Scott, and the Mayor Pro Tem. It's been fabulous, man, working with you, my friend. I'll save that for, I'll save that for next week.
That is, for sure.
It has been. Number four, motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the West Avenue-Mason Road urban renewal area pursuant to section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa. Mr. Tisland?
No changes from the previous reading. Again, this is the second step in the process that would allow the use of TIF funds for this project. This sets up a TIF district specifically for this Outlot 3 Swisher subdivision. That was part of the urban renewal plan adopted by the city council of the larger area, but this TIF district is just for this one area and allows for the use of TIF funds in this area for this project. If this is approved through the process, this TIF ordinance, the final process would be a development agreement with the developer specifying the terms for the use of TIF.
We've already been here, guys, but do you have any questions tonight for?
If I can ask a related question?
Sure.
How much TIF area has been released recently back to the general fund?
The current year's budget, Stephanie, is about $9 million was released to the general fund and we're using about $75 million worth of TIF. This next year's budget, we'll be releasing, I want to say in the 18 million, although I haven't seen the exact figures, but right around 18 million, and we'll be using, I think, 84 million between the base TIF area and then the TIF rebates that we have on different projects.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to bring that out so the public knows that we're not just perpetually, eternally holding TIF.
Well, we have perpetually, eternally held, but we have gotten the last two years where we've been able to start releasing and our plan is to the base, we're going to hold, and we've asked Travis to kind of model using about $75 million worth of increment.
Right, okay.
And then the rebates that are going on, aside from that, and anything above that, we are releasing. We've been seeing in the TIF areas about a 9% growth somewhere in that neighborhood the last several years. I don't know what we'll have as we move into the future, but those have been the areas that have had significant growth as we've moved forward. So we're, you know, it makes a good difference on, or good impact on what our property valuations now are in the general fund moving forward.
And it helps the other taxing entities?
And it helps the other taxing entities to the same level.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My question is, how many other individuals or companies have come forward asking for TIF as far as residential goes?
The one that you specifically dealt with here was Ryan Nagraki's. Now, I know that we've had questions asked in the past. I've had one specific developer that's asked me, but in the context of when it was being asked was five years ago and it was a different context. At that point, we had deficit accounts in a TIF fund. We didn't have anything that we could really afford to carve out at that point. Now, Eric, I don't know if you've had other developers who've asked when they've come in?
Just the general question of TIF versus tax abatement. Our response has always been it's ultimately up to council. You'd have to go before council and present a proposal. Ryan Nagraki's the first one that's actually brought that forward to that step. I know when there's discussion on tax abatement, some of the developers, I remember Scott Peck brought up use of TIF versus tax abatement, and that's probably five years ago, and with the council at that time, just whether there's an incentive for the developers versus the homeowners and that discussion just led to where we're at now with our tax abatement. But otherwise, Nagraki's the only one that's actually pursued and brought forward an actual proposal and plan.
The reason I bring that up is because there's been, you know, some discussion of we're picking winners and losers and things like that, when really it seems as though only two people have come forward to us in a good while.
Well, from a staff perspective, we've talked about with, when the questions come up, that they're welcome to, that the council hasn't approved in the past. And I think that you had another proposal, maybe 10 years ago, for another comparable developments, I think in the same area as Ryan Nagraki's, and that might have had a, did that have a request for TIF at that point, too?
That was, I think, 13 or 14 years ago. During the same process, I think it was just before I'd gotten here, they had started the annexation process and looking at a development and think we're looking at TIF, but ultimately, I don't know what the reason was, didn't move forward, but I know TIF was at least talked about.
So we've talked about the context of it hasn't been something that the council has approved in the past, but they certainly could go that route if they wanted to. Now, that being said, this is a change of, would be a change of philosophy if you were to move forward with it this way. And the question certainly could be there, are you picking and choosing? I don't know. It depends on how you address it as we move forward.
Right. And that's just like an in theory thing, because so far we've been generally in favor of both of those recent requests for TIF. I do, I would feel so much more comfortable if we had some sort of, you know, ordinance or some sort of regulations, set rules that we could go by in order to, I guess, not filter, but regulate future TIF requests.
And I think that was one of the things that when planning and zoning was wanting to do their combined meeting with you, they brought that up as one of their three
Yes.
topics that they'd like to address this next year for the development of a policy for you. And it seemed like the council in that work session was amenable to letting them pursue that and try to develop a policy. Is that fair enough?
Yeah, that was my understanding from the meeting, sure.
And if I was going to be here, I would be in favor that as long as the policy has some meat to it, I mean, the example we looked at, I mean, it was really nothing because the bottom line was, we might adore this if we don't like it, you know, so to me, that's meaningless.
Right.
I think most places leave, generally do leave it kind of flexible, because there are, part of what you're doing with TIF is trying to be, I mean, if you look at what the background is for what this is for, it's promoting economic growth in the community. And housing is one of the mechanisms that you can use to do it. And you may have some base things that you think makes general sense, but you're always going to run into specifics.
Yeah, that's true.
And this isn't about trying to, I mean, when you think about promoting economic growth, that doesn't mean that you're going to have a set standard that this is the only way that things can happen. So you do, you do need to look at it as being some generic things that will allow some parameters, but some flexibility at the same time.
Right. Yeah, and that's my, that's my only thing, is, you know, going back and forth, weighing pros and cons and, you know, people who are against it and people who are for it, of course, and I've said this a thousand times, and it'll probably continue to be this way, is that I only hear from people who are against it. So does that mean the vast majority is for it? I don't know. You know, I can't say that. But I think, I think after thinking about this for a while now and kind of going through everything, that there's more pros to this than there are cons, if any, you know, we, I don't see why we need to have any sort of ag land plots of corn or soybeans in the middle of town. To me, that seems silly. I don't, I don't think that should be something that we have here. So what would we put there? Let's hope houses that people can move here and, you know, build a life here or move out of a rental and move into their own home. The other part was that we had a plan in the 90s to make a lot of those streets so that they're not dead-ended. And that, to me, is an important thing, you know, finishing our plans. So I guess that's all of my input right now on that.
Thank you.
Are we good?
I tend to agree with you. I guess you don't.
You're good.
Thank you. I like that color, by the way.
Well, they finally won a game, so I thought I should recognize them.
Way to represent, my friend. All right, we're good then?
Yep.
Okay. Number five, resolution approving the final plat of sixth addition to Stonegate Crossing subdivision. Again, we've been here before again, but Mr. Tisland, refresh us, please.
This is the area south off of Mason Road, just to the east of Roosevelt Avenue, south of Dunn Brothers, where Lawrence Drive currently extends into this development. This was preliminary platted last year. Mike Pearson, developer Pearson Inc., is looking to subdivide two lots and further extend the roadway to the south. Property line of these two lots, lots two and four. This is zoned for commercial development and does follow along the lines of the preliminary plat with a minor modification. Originally, it had two lots along the east side of this roadway, combining it into one large lot. And then per the approval of council with the preliminary plat, they will have a hammerhead at the south end of this once this further develops. So again, this is plating two lots and a road right away. There is an improvement agreement and will be a letter credit on hand for construction of that roadway since it would not be done prior to plating, which Mr. Pearson's working on now, so hopefully.
So just, just for perspective, on Lot 1 is where Dunn Brothers is, is that correct?
Correct, yep.
And there are no other, going to be no other entrances on Mason Road on Lot 4?
No other on Lot 4. Per the preliminary plat approval, the only entrances are off Lawrence Drive and then a potential shared driveway here that lines up with Sequoia, but no other driveways on Mason.
Okay.
Any other questions? You guys good?
Good.
Mr. Pearson, we thank you. Number six, resolution approving the final plat of Arbor View Estates subdivision. Mr. Tisland?
This, Ken, was discussed at previous meeting. They have completed some of the work as required. This is plating 25 lots north off of Sun East Side Drive, east off of Cliff Road, with a new Arbor View Drive entering into the subdivision and Harvest Lane going to the north. There is an outlot required as part of the subdivision. If the property of the north ever develops, the owner is maintaining a letter credit that this would be required to construct the property to the north. This does follow all the requirements of the Arbor View Estates PUD that was approved by council, and there are a couple minor items that will be addressed as well. And I don't know if they've addressed with the uptake in the stormwater, but they do have 30 days to complete that. And outlots 18 through 21 on the north end, based on the distances, would have required to have sprinkler systems as one of the conditions. And Outlot 2, the tension pond, would be maintained by the developer unless the city accepts that in the future.
Questions?
No.
I like it.
I'm good.
Okay. I'm sorry, what's that?
I'm good.
Good. All right, let's move to the proposed consent agenda. Number one is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. Any problems there? All right. Number two is a resolution approving purchase of two city buses for the Burlington Urban Service. Mr. Mack?
Good evening. In front of you is a resolution approving purchase of two medium-duty buses. At the beginning of the fiscal year, the DOT awarded us, based on the scoring that the state does, two medium-duty bus replacement at 80-20% match. So the total bus purchase is 221,339. The local match portion of that will be $44,269. They are essentially the same bus. The price difference between the two is about $3,000, 109,000 to 112,000, and that's the location of where the lift is for handicap, for wheelchairs. Putting that in the front bumps up the price a little bit, but because of our usorship of where we'd want to have that, we felt like it was necessary. So we had $156,000 ceiling. We're not going to go to that full extent, so we will be paying 20% of the overall price.
Okay. Did you ever, did you ever look into?
Bike racks?
Yes.
Unfortunately, on these two, it won't fit in the building if we put them on, because it extends it probably another five to seven foot.
Keep that on the brain. I got a guy that's busting me up about it, and I think it's a good idea. I just don't want to, I don't want that to get lost in everything, so, okay. Questions for Nick?
I do want to remind council on this, we had budgeted a larger match on this because we didn't anticipate getting federal funds for both of these buses.
Correct.
But we need those funds.
Imagine that.
For Eric's demolition project for Parkview.
Parkview Care, yep.
That's the excess there we're going to need to transfer over to cover the deficit on that project.
Is it going to cover the entire deficit?
It'll cover it.
Good.
Because I think we had 216,000 budgeted from sales tax money.
Actually, as I say that, it might not cover it prior to the lot sales, but you're anticipating selling the three lots off of it.
And then that won't.
And that'll put us in a positive, even if the initial transfer doesn't cover it.
Speaking of that, so what is the progress on there? We walked by there yesterday and they're doing something at that.
Yeah, they probably have 75% of the asbestos removed, which has been the large portion, large cost of it. Demolition would not take very long once all the asbestos is removed. Looking at either towards the end of this year, very first part of January, that they'll be complete with that.
Thank you.
Any other, what have you got there?
Next item.
Any other questions or concerns?
None.
None for me, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Nick.
All right, number three, since you're already standing there. Is a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Burlington, Iowa and Alliant Energy Incorporated for all-night lighting service on Pawnee Drive?
We have a request for a street light at the end of Pawnee Drive, which is a cul-de-sac. The resolution in front of you is a little bit different than the ones that have been previously requested. Because all the electrical is underground, this would require running new electrical to a new location and then a new pole and light installation. That installation from Alliant is $516, and then the, the light is a little bit cheaper at $6.86. There's, Alliant has another option where you pay it, you don't pay any upfront charge, but have a higher monthly rate. It wouldn't take very many months of that light being up for it to pay for the initial installation costs. So I went with option number two, which is, is what is before you. I had, I talked with my staff and also with the staff from PD, looking in that area. These lights are very similar to the ones that were in the Sunrise West complex. They're the colonial-style lights on fiberglass poles, probably lofted a little bit too high for what they're, what they're supposed to be used for, and the glass is very opaque. Because of that, I feel like it would be in the best interest to have those replaced with better lighting and therefore could assess it at that point. So based on that, my recommendation is not for approval.
So can we move this off the consent, because I agree with you, we drove by there yesterday. I don't see that they need it, even if it was, the two lights that are existing, if they just change them and make them, like you said, less opaque, I guess I don't see why they need another pole right there.
I drove, I'll go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
I drove past there on my way down here and with surrounding lighting, I was hoping to wait till, you know, as dark as it could possibly get before the meeting, so it wasn't, you know, there weren't any lights on or anything yet, but, yeah, yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying, I just, I don't want anybody to, I don't want anybody to think that we're, that they can't, people can't come and say, hey, you know, there's an area here that needs a, that needs some attention. You know, if there's an area that needs some attention that's, that slipped past us, by all means, please do, but, yeah, I'm not saying it on this one as well.
We're taking steps to make sure that we don't allow these other lights to, this colonial-style light to go up from the, in the, in future developments? Is that, is that correct?
Correct. From what we, we talk to when, when lighting or infrastructure is being requested, we make sure that it is something that Alliant is able to maintain or something in their inventory list. I don't know at the time if those were ones. They are switching them up to some of the ones, the other ones that I talked about in Sunrise West, the clear LED ones that seem to light up a little bit better. I still think that the poles are probably too tall for what those lights are being used for, but if they're any lower in those type of circumstances, they probably would be.
They need the, you know, the little, the little hook on the end, you know, they need one, that's what the setup they need over there, that'd work out just fine. But anyways, are you guys good?
So to me, it's basically for appearance, those light poles.
Hey, it looks nice, but just as.
If it's not light, it's not for light.
I'm sorry, John.
So you're, we're going to move that off the consent?
Please.
Agenda?
Okay. And number four, while you're there, a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Burlington, Iowa and Alliant Energy Incorporated for all-night lighting service for Magnolia Lane. Nick?
In front of you is another street light request. This one is on a relatively new development up by the Burlington Country Club, Magnolia Lane. As you can see here, the existing lighting in that area is the orange dot down on Florence Avenue, so it's a significant distance away. This, too, because there is no lighting in that area and the electrical is underground, there would be an installation cost of $652. And at this place, I would be recommending a wooden pole with an overhead light, similar to what you see in the rest of town. Then the cost per month on this light would be $6.86 a month. I would recommend approval on this one because there is no lighting for, I think it's over 200 foot away. I will admit that in the past, upon acceptance, that there was a mistake, that we probably shouldn't have accepted the infrastructure in this area without proper lighting having been installed.
Yeah, see, that's my, my thing. If a developer's going to, like the developments we're talking about, Arbor View and the one on West Avenue, the developer ought to be putting in lights, shouldn't he?
I would, I would agree.
Yeah.
And we accepted this several years ago.
Magnolia needs a light.
Also, this is one of the things that you've talked about in terms of what our development requirements are, and it's not, is it clearly specified for lighting?
There is no clear specification.
And that's something that we've talked about, is the need to modify what we have for development requirements.
That's a good idea.
You want a kind of a happy medium. You want there to be enough lighting in the road, but you don't want to have that many lights that you're going to end up breaking the bank because you have too many on a given block.
You're on the page.
So if we approve this, then we're stuck with installation costs?
Correct.
Which is the 500 and?
652.
This is fixed, 652.
I'm not crazy about that. So are we keeping this on the consent calendar?
Uh, I'm fine with leaving that one on the consent. You guys want to move it off? If you want to, we can. We move the other one.
I find where it is.
There's, there's nine lots there that's going to have to have some light, so it would have been great to have the developer put it in the first place, but now we're stuck with it, so I'm okay with it being on the consent.
I guess I would like to move it off, just because I haven't, on my way home tonight, I want to drive by there.
Okay.
I'm sure I'll find what Nick is saying, but, well, leave it on there. Leave it on consent, and then if I want to.
We can pull it.
I can pull it next time.
Okay, okay. All right. Are we good? You good?
Yes.
Okay. Number six, a resolution approving the application of a surface transportation block grant for Madison Avenue and 9th Street. Jess?
Hi, Jen.
How's it going?
Great.
Jesse Howe, city engineer. I think Eric's got a couple of slides for me here. So I figured I'd give you guys an overview of the STBG program in case you're not familiar with it. Basically, it is a federally funded program. I'll leave you guys to read the abbreviations up there. There's a lot of acronyms, but basically what it amounts to is $2 to $3 million a year. We submit an application and then the folks at Southeast Iowa Regional Community Planning weigh the different applications for our region, based on six factors, economic vitality, system preservation, safety, accessibility and mobility, integration and connectivity, and then local and regional factors. If we receive funds for this project, we get them, we get notified in July and we would be eligible to use them in fiscal year 2022, and it would be funded on 80% basis. We'd have to, we'd have to provide 20%, the other 20%, so. The project we're proposing is a section of road from Angular down to Sunset on Madison and 9th. It's a pretty substantial stretch of road. There's two kind of distinct portions to it. 9th Street is basically from south to Angular, and then Madison is from south down to Sunset. The estimated project cost for this project is 1.86 million, of which we would be committed to 373,300, and STBG would provide roughly a million and a half. We currently have this slated on the 2022 fiscal year for our five-year road plan, so we already have, basically money's allotted for this, and if we were, to get the money, we would switch that five-year road plan around a little bit to make way for different roads and other priorities, so. Next slide. A little bit more about that corridor. On 9th Street from Angular to south, the road is in really poor condition. You can kind of see there, but you can't see all the cracks, but it's, it's rough. The PCI for that section is a 6, which anything I think below 20 is considered failing, so the whole corridor is below a 13. But this stretch in particular is, is bad. We've done some patching there recently, but when they did the patching and got down into the road surface, the base is completely disintegrated for the most part. So what we're, what we're looking at in that section from Angular to south is complete reconstruction, new eight-inch concrete. So it'll be a fairly substantial project. And then for the rest of the project from Madison, south down to Sunset, the base looks to be in better look, better repair there, so we're just looking at an overlay there. We did look at all the crash data and everything involved for this stretch of road. There were 66 accidents within the last five years, and the crash data can be kind of tricky to decipher because they use a bunch of different terms that don't always apply. But in looking at those, nine of the 66 looked like they were either cars crossing the middle lane, running into parked cars, or running into objects on the side of the road. So we, we got to looking at road widths and we found out that the portion of Madison Avenue is 30, 30-foot wide. The minimum acceptable per the SUDAS design standards is 31-foot, so we kind of got to thinking about how to remedy that. Rather than widening, what we're going to propose with this is eliminating on-street parking and putting in two bike lanes, a four-foot bike lane on each side. I want to just throw that out there and see what the perception was. It doesn't appear that there's a ton of usage there, but it could be a contentious issue, so I want to get it out in the open. But the portion from.
Excuse me, Jesse, removing the parking from, from Angular to, or from, yeah, from.
South.
From south.
From south to Sunset?
Yeah, south to Sunset. So Angular to south is 36-foot wide, and it's perfectly wide enough to support parking on one side. But south to Sunset is only 30-foot wide.
Great.
Which is substandard per SUDAS, so. So that's what we're looking at, and if you go to the next slide, it, here's a couple of pictures. In addition to, you know, the parking and the width being too short, you have a lot of clear zone obstructions, so you see there, and that's actually by the school, so that's not south of, of South Street, but in a couple of locations, you have poles and things right off the curb that pose a problem when you're supposed to have a minimum of five foot five in the clear zone. So you can count your bike lanes as clear zone and it kind of frees everything up for you.
Are you going to start looking, are you guys going to start looking for more opportunities to slide in bike lanes as we?
We have been trying to. We, we're, every time we look at some of these projects, we, we go against that pedestrian plan that was developed a couple of years ago here and see what makes sense. and see what makes sense. I was gonna put a shot of this, that in there, but I don't have it, uh, right now, but it isn't on the plan, but it does connect a few of those routes in a north-south direction, which, you know, aren't really, we don't have a north-south connection on the south side of town to connect a couple of those things. And it does give additional bike, uh, traffic ability between the two schools there, Grimes and, uh, James Madison, so. So that's, uh, what I have for you today, and if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions, guys?
From having been on that tack advisory board, it, it all just depends on what the competition is, whether you get approval or not.
Yeah, I think, I think we have a pretty good chance. The ADT is fairly high. Uh, it's thirty-five, thirty-five hundred to forty-five hundred and.
Our number's low enough.
Yeah, PCI is pretty low, so.
You guys good?
One, one, one thing that I had a question on, because it came up today, and I think that council of, at least some of you have talked about it on the radio. Do you know when Mason Road, the sidewalk along Mason Road is supposed to be done?
It is in design now. It has to be let through the DOT. We're looking at doing it sometime this year, but I don't have a really good window.
Next, this next spring, you mean?
We'll be letting it this year, so it'll probably happen summer to fall, if I had to guess.
Okay.
So.
That was what, I wasn't sure if it was this, this, this season or the following. I was thinking it was the next one, but.
Nope.
Okay.
It's construction year.
Is that all you had, James?
It's, I just, yeah.
Thanks, Jesse.
All right, thanks, guys.
All right. I'm sorry, we're good, everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, number seven, a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Southeast Iowa Swim Club. Nobody from the swim club?
Uh, Swim Club is, uh, looking to go, uh, I guess, submit their grant or meet with the committee on Wednesday. Uh, some of the feedback they've gotten back is just, uh, their role or responsibility being the applicant for the dome. Uh, in our lease agreement, we state that the dome is under the ownership of the swim club. Uh, the grant committees expressed some desire to have the, um, swim club be the responsible committee, which they had intended to do as far as taking the, putting the dome up, taking it down, and any maintenance costs. So, um, that's what this attempts to do. This has been sent to our attorney. He hasn't gotten back yet. Uh, did, uh, correspond with him today, and hopefully, uh, tomorrow, Wednesday, we'll get something back, uh, just with any comments from him. But, um, this is based on, I guess, the grant committee's desire to have some, uh, acknowledgement that the swim club is the responsible party for putting up the dome, taking it down, and maintenance of the dome, uh, since they are the grand applicant and responsible party and owner of the dome.
Makes sense. You guys good?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Number seven is resolution waiving any potential conflict of interest resulting from Lynch Dallas PC representing the city of West Burlington with respect to the proposed voluntary annexation of territory within the two miles of the city of Burlington. Jim or ET?
I have a map here. Stephanie, you can switch over. The, uh, city of West Burlington is looking to annex a portion of property. Uh, it is within the two miles of the city of Burlington, uh, in which, uh, they required by the, uh, city development board at the state to, uh, give notice to the city of Burlington. Uh, Lynch Dallas does represent both, uh, communities. Um, the annexation is this white box here. You can see the red, uh, boundary lines. Um, there's no opportunity for the city to annex this unless we went all the way around, uh, the top of West Burlington, so, um, I guess, uh, the resolution states that, uh, the city has no issue with, uh, Lynch Dallas representing them, and based on our future land use map and our growth areas, this is not within either, and, uh, staff would not have an issue, uh, with West Burlington annexing this area.
You guys good?
Yes.
Yes.
Did you wanna say something, James? There's a look on your face like you wanted to say something. Jim? Jim, you wanna say something?
Is that their new public works building?
That I'm not sure, I guess.
It's north of there. Drive down the corner of Workson Road.
And it's proposed, oh, okay.
Where the road turns left.
All right.
Uh, the address is one zero five five eight Washington Road that they're looking, or looking at annexing.
Okay. Trying to think, there are housing development there, or? Thank you.
Number eight, resolution amending fees and charge schedule at Flint Hills Municipal Golf Course. Mr. Juslin?
This is, uh, looking at an increase to the, uh, passes and leases at the golf course. Our advisory committee did, uh, meet and, uh, did recommend, or make the recommendation that these brought forward to council for consideration of approval. Looking at a, uh, ten-dollar increase for, uh, typical passes, uh, five dollars for some of the smaller passes independent, and, uh, ten dollar for trail fee and, uh, cart leases as well on an annual basis.
You good with that, golf pro?
I certainly am.
Are the rest of you guys good?
It's good.
And I recommend people buy themselves a pass.
I tell you, you do. Cause you got one, don't you?
Before February fourteen.
There you go. All right, we've got a date for public hearing set for January second, uh, for consideration of plans and specs for the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge Project, and consideration of plans and specs for the two thousand eighteen Locust Basin Sewer Separation Project. Coming soon. Discussion items, Locust Sewer Separation. Mr. McGregor?
I don't wanna go back. It's the same topic area. Um, you, there's a set date previously for the plans and specs on the Locust Basin Sewer Separation. Um, you likely see that come off. We had a CDGB application out for the sewer separation area, um, and I believe we can confirm that we did not receive that CDGB, um, funds. There is another application cycle that is due January first. You'll likely see a resolution come forward at the next meeting, um, for another application, and that we will not find out until March whether or not we receive that, so we would want to hold off on having the public hearing, um, for those plans and specs. So with that, um, Matt Wildman with HR Green is gonna present on not just sewer separation, but, um, sewer system in general.
Matt, what's your last name?
Wildman. W I L D M A N.
He's a wild man.
Wild man, that is correct, so. I will do the best I can to remain calm and everything else.
Everyone remain calm. We've got a wild man in the house.
It's all okay. I've got about thirty slides to go through here, so for the next hour and a half, I will entertain you with.
Thank you, Wild man.
Yeah, yeah, you bet. You bet. Um, the, the Locust, uh, the plans and specifications, we have finished up. Basically, uh, we're at hundred percent with those. Those are being reviewed. We are ready to submit those for permit applications right now, and, and like Nick said, we're looking at, um, going to another CDBG application with an approved facility plan, with plans and specs submitted, and hope to, uh, hope to get good news on that, um, in regards to pushing that, that project forward in the early springtime next year for, for Locust separation. So the plan that we have moving forward here, um, we're in the process right now developing a sewer master plan, um, not only for the Mazel Basin, but for the entire city of Burlington. And one of the things that's part of that is, uh, is community relations and public education to, to help people understand what is going on with the sewer system and what is gonna be coming as, as we move forward in this whole process. So this is kind of a, a sneak peek for you guys to, to see what's out there and what we plan to present, um, at various, um, more or less, public hearings, I guess, public informational meetings to help educate people in the area that these projects will be moving forward. So please feel free, ask questions as I go along here in the end. If there's say areas that you think I need to go more in-depth or less in-depth, let me know, and I will adjust this presentation as we kind of move forward, so. Sensitive, so, I'm sorry. Um, so we'll go over a few basic terms here. Um, stormwater is water that falls from the sky, lands on the ground, and, uh, doesn't get flushed down a toilet or down a sink or through, uh, washing machines, that sort of stuff. So stormwater would be any of that road runoff, uh, water that comes into area drains in people's yards or falls from the sky. Waste water is waste water. Sanitary sewer would be pipes that are conveying wastewater, and the storm sewer is conveying the storm water. The combined sewers then are conveying both stormwater and sanitary sewer water, sanitary water, wastewater. And, uh, the combined sewer, what's left in town right now resides primarily in the Mazel Basin. Most of the rest of town has been separated, so. Um, lift station is basically a pump station. You're probably aware of that. A pump station to pump, uh, combined sewer or sanitary sewer water into a, to lift it up so it can get to the treatment plant. Uh, combined sewer overflow is what we're trying to eliminate, which when it rains right now, water flows out over the ground, into the creek, into the river. Um, so we're trying to eliminate those, and sanitary sewer overflows are basically sanitary sewer that cannot maintain its capacity. And you actually have a sewage overflow in an area, so. Those are some basic terms. Here's kind of a, just a depiction of a collection system. It shows where, uh, water, wastewater comes from and goes to. Very small, hard to see, so we'll just move on from that one. Um, combined system there on the left, you see you've got, uh, your sanitary drains coming out of your house. You also may have roof drains hooked into those, area drains hooked into those, um, yeah, storm drains off your street hooked into those, and then those combined sewers have overflows in them. When they get full, they overflow, that, what that water goes somewhere. In a separated system, basically that clean water, storm water is completely separated from the sanitary water, so the storm water only is what should be overflowing into a river, a creek, or outletting there. But in some cases, you do still have sanitary sewer overflows that happen due to, uh, other infiltration into the system or influence the system from other locations.
So when you do the separation, the, uh, the new pipe gets stormed, and the, the old pipe keeps the sewer, or is it vice versa?
A combination of both. A combination of both. In the, i- in the past, and I'll get, I'll get a little into this, but this is a perfect time to just kind of touch on it. In the other basins that were separated, um, in town, in Hawkeye Cascade Basins primarily, um, there was a lot of storm sewer that was put in new, and the point of that was to find those intakes, run a pipe between them, and discharge it at the nearest location, whether that be a ravine, a creek, other drainage area, um, wherever it could be done. So you have a minimal amount of pipe that needs to be installed compared to installing a sanitary, which has to get plumbed all the way to the treatment plant. So with that approach, what happens is none of the existing pipe that's out there, that combined sewer, remains all a sanitary sewer in theory, and it's oversized pipe, it's old pipe, so it still has connections into it from houses and other intakes, and it's cracked pipe, poor condition, that sort of thing. So our strategy here with the Locust Basin and the separation there is to install more new sanitary sewer, which is a smaller pipe diameter, and only do kind of, we use the existing sewer as storm sewer, so that we keep the larger-sized pipe in the ground where we have it, maybe do some, some spot repairs where necessary, but put a lot more sanitary sewer in the ground that's new. That way, we eliminate a lot of that infiltration that gets into that old sewer pipe, and we convey less water to the wastewater treatment plant. Because now, when it rains, water coming out of the Hawkeye Basin that's in the sanitary separated sewer still inundates that Market Street Lift Station, and even if we take every drop of water out of, out of the Mazel Basins, we still have a capacity problem just coming out of Hawkeye. So what we're trying to do in Mazel is reduce the amount of that INI influ- infiltration that gets into the sewer.
Thank you.
Does that cover it?
Thank you.
Probably more detail than you wanted.
No, it's fine. I like it.
Yep. Um, so, any other questions on that side? Perfect. Um, so infiltration and inflow, as we were kind of talking about, comes from broken or cracked pipes, from intakes out in the streets and the curb that collect storm water. Uh, a lot of INI comes from private connections through houses, whether it's roof drains, sump pumps, um, area drains out in yards or driveways, uh, roots penetrating into the sewer, uh, surfaces that are cracked and below groundwater tables that, that just take on water and act like a drain tile. All of that getting into the system, um, creates those peaks. When it rains, even in a sep- completely separated system, you'll start to see higher flows coming out of your sanitary than under dry weather conditions because that water gets in, no matter what you do. You also have, uh, the aging infrastructure mains, the city infrastructure through sewers, storm sewers, manholes, and other areas where you have water that can seep into the pipe or flow into the pipe under high water ground, high groundwater conditions, so. Um, the, the project map here on the, on the left, um, you can see kind of the outline of where the Hawkeye and Cascade Basins are relative to the Mazel Basin. The Mazel Basin is more or less a fully developed area in Burlington. There's not a lot of what I would call, consider green space in that area. It's primarily all business and, and residential area. Pretty compact, pretty dense. So not, not a lot of area to, again, go back in there and outlet storm sewers into, into detention basins or other types of structures because it is fully developed. So the market, the Mazel Basin that we're looking at there is the green, pink, orange, and blue on the right side. The basin that we have designed right now is that Locust, which is the brown. I don't know, is there a laser pointer on here?
There's a red one.
There we go. Um, right there is the Locust Basin within there, and that's what we've designed so far. Strategy again is to start in that small basin right there and do a fully comprehensive project, more or less. Attack it with all the aggressiveness that we can attack it to do the best that we can, and then go back in with the flow meters and validate what we've done and say, what percentage did we get out of this? Now, if we extrapolate that out to the rest of the Mazel Basins, how good can we do? Is the money that we're spending in Locust worth it? And is that extra dollars that we'll spend on this project, because it is more expensive than what has been done historically, is that extra money we're spending gonna be worth it? Or do we back off, go back to the old way it was, and make the treatment plant twice as big to be able to handle all the flow now? And that may be cheaper than going ahead and treating all the wastewater, but that's what we're gonna need to know. And I can't stand here and tell you one way or another, how's it gonna come out? Cause I don't know yet. But that's what we're trying to do with Locust, to start with that small piece, see how effective this approach can be, and whether or not it's gonna be effective long-term moving forward through the rest of Mazel. And then the sanitary sewer master plan that we're looking at is gonna go back and revisit Hawkeye and Cascade and see if some of these same approaches can be moved into those through sewer lining or other infrastructure replacement on a cost-effective basic, basic, basis. And looking at stormwater up there is how can we capture the stormwater before it even gets into one of the pipes and then take care of it that way? And that's kind of EPA, um, EPA is working on that too with a, a storm water master plan, so. Uh, existing conditions, um, it is a combined collection system. There are four CSOs. The Locust Project will take care of one of those. So we eliminate one with that Locust Project alone. Um, that area, as I mentioned, fully developed. Hawkeye and Cascade Basin, um, that is a separated system. By definition, um, it's old aging infrastructure, a lot of INI issues, as we've kind, kind of talked about, and there's great potential in those areas for future development. So as we look at this master plan, we're gonna be looking at what can we do with the existing sewer, and also, how can we service more of those areas as additional development occurs? How do we transport that water from this point down to the treatment plant? Or do we look at another treatment plant, or, you know, all those options become on the table as we look at this? So some of the existing conditions, um, just so you guys could get an idea of what you've got out there in the system, if you haven't seen it already, here is a deteriorated manhole, uh, bricks falling out of there. When it rains, there is water that pours into those, those types of manholes, cause.
Is that literally one of ours?
That is one of you. All these pictures are your stuff, so.
I, I thought we had better, better-looking manholes than that.
You do.
In some places.
You do have a few. There's a few out there. We didn't find many in Locust, so, in Mazel, but, uh, there are some out there. This is a, is one of the better ones. There are others with boxes and debris and, and bicycles and other fun stuff down in them too. So, uh, here's one where it, it's a broken inlet completely, so anyone, uh, could fall in there. This guy was, happened to be wearing a yellow vest, so at least we could see him fall in and pull him back out, but, uh, that is, uh, that is, again, out in, out in your system. Um, here's some debris and other stuff, so obviously not any intake protection over that. So that's, that's not good. This is a condition inside a pipe. So this is a hole inside the pipe through televising. This is seen. Um, you've got root penetration into the pipes. This is taking away capacity. So when it rains really heavy and that pipe is flowing full of water, these roots are backing it up, so you're ponding water. So you're actually getting attenuation in the system, which, when this is cleaned up and that water's allowed to get down, it's gonna get down to the bottom of the system a lot faster. So you're gonna see a, potential capacity issues through that when you get the water in more efficiently. This is a picture of a blockage on the whole side of the sewer there. Fun stuff, uh, creeping into the pipe, um, and other debris, again, in the bottom of the pipe here. A lot of material deposition out there, so. These areas, as we looked in Locust, these are all areas that we're, we're trying to address in one form or another, this, like this type of pipe. We'd be jetting them out, cleaning them, and possibly coming back in to. We'd be jetting them out, cleaning them, and possibly coming back in to line some of these areas as well, so. Here's an offset joint in the pipe, just separated, so exfiltration and infiltration can happen at these locations. You can either lose water or gain water depending on, on groundwater conditions. In a lot of these areas, there's sewers running down the alleys in between the houses. The pavement condition is not great. And there's also the other side of that, is there's not a whole lot of room between structures to dig a trench and install new pipe, especially to have two pipes within that corridor too. So, those are all considerations through design where we looked at, what can we reuse? What can we line? Are there existing sewers out there that are dedicated to sanitary right now that we can reuse in any way, shape, or form and put in a minimum amount of storm and get it connected back up the lines that are in the streets? And so, those things were all kind of looked at and evaluated as we did Locust. And moving forward in the master plan, those are all things that we have to consider is we wanna, we wanna do projects that make sense and we don't wanna go in and, and put in a new road and then come back in a couple of years later and tear that back up too. So, all those things are being coordinated in that, in that master plan to look at, at long, long-term how we handle it. So, this is just a summary of kind of some of those problems that we just went through in the photos. And so, why do we need a separate system, you may ask? The reason is because you have an administrative consent order right now that says that all CSOs in town must be eliminated by 2025. That date is coming quickly, and there's a lot of work out there that needs to be done.
We've got a problem with that date, Wildman.
Do I have a problem with that date?
No, I said, we have a problem with that.
I don't doubt that you have a problem with that date. I have a problem with that date. So, that's, that's what the administrative consent order says today. That is something that we are going to be working on very, very hard in the very near future here to lay out what is a realistic timeframe. When can this be done? And, you know, I don't think we're talking about 10 or 20 years to do. I think we're talking more than that, and, and we're gonna be advocating for much more than that, so. I agree. That's what the paper says today.
That's what the paper says today.
So, it needs to be done, there's no doubt about it. But the timeframe of, with which it needs to be done, to do it, to do it the right way and to address the problem the right way and not, not spend money in a way that doesn't end up with the end product that you need, it takes a little bit more time maybe to address that than what it just needs to be. We, I, I think one of the, one of the catchphrases they had on slides when we, when we did the interview is success, not compliance, is what we're looking for. We're looking for success, not just compliance with this. We don't wanna, we want the city to be better off in the end than just having dumped truckloads of money down the sewer, so to speak. What else on there? Anything else?
No, but we're looking forward to changing our bracelets to Burlington, Iowa. A great place to live, work, play, and flush your toilet.
Yeah.
We're really excited about that, so.
Put me on the list, I want one.
Good God.
Hopefully, hopefully not selling them for a million dollars a piece to try to raise money to do this.
Wish they could find a buyer though.
There you go. So, the sewer master plan is going to evaluate a lot of the options that, that I've kind of discussed here. Is we wanna look at all possibilities, we wanna, we wanna consider everything. You know, if there's an idea, we don't wanna just dismiss it quickly because, oh, that hasn't been done before. We wanna look at what, what makes the most sense and how can we do this? Because this is a, it's a long-term problem without a short solution here. It's been going on for a long time, and it's gonna take a while to turn around and, and get things back to where they need to be. In this, we're gonna identify the project prioritization as well. What are the, the needs? Mazel, we know is a need. And we know that it's gonna be, it's gonna drive the sewer master plan right now. But in driving that sewer master plan, I can't forget about the rest of the infrastructure. We have to keep in mind what can be done along the way here to help out in Hawkeye, because we need to free up capacity out of that Market Street Lift Station in order to put Mazel, most of the Mazel Basens into it. Those are the types of things that we wanna consider. So, we're gonna be looking at how to prioritize those projects in a logical way that makes sense, that matches a city annual budget to where we can come up with a realistic timeframe and go to the DNR and the EPA and say, this is what we can do. Here's our plan. With your approval, we plan to implement this and stick to it. And that's, that's what we wanna do. We don't wanna jump the gun and do that prematurely either, so. Water bottleneck issues, we wanna get rid of those where we do have bottleneck concerns, big sewers coming together that overflow every time it rains. Lift station improvements, flood wall coordination, you're going through a big project there as well. We wanna make sure that we address that properly and get water going on both sides of that the way it's supposed to.
That would make Don happy.
Yeah.
He's back there, that would make him smile.
I'm sure he's, he's not sleeping yet, in fact. Yeah.
Not till after the meeting.
Yeah. So, the, the long-term strategy, a CIMOM program, you may be familiar with that or have experienced that in, in other locations. But that basically puts all the drivers on, what, what do you do? How do you maintain the sewer system? And, and puts the, the responsibility on the city staff to, to operate and maintain that sewer system so that it does have long-term effectiveness. And there's a big strategy that goes around that, which, which can be developed. Revisiting Hawkeye and Cascade, future del- growth and development, stakeholder involvement and buy-in. And that's one of the things that we feel is important with some of these public meetings is to make sure that, that everybody's buying into, into what we're trying to, to get at here. And, and validating the approach as we go along. We don't wanna keep doing the same thing over and over again if it's not gonna be successful. So, we're, we're going after Locust right now, like I said, with a very, very aggressively trying to do everything we can. We're gonna put flow meters in there and see how we did. If we didn't do a very good job, we might go a little bit further, because we're, we're stopping short of spending all the money that we can possibly spend in Locust. We're not doing that. We're not lining a lot of those sewers in there, because we think we'd come back and do that more cost-effectively as part of a larger, larger project. If that's the case, we come in, we line them, and then we see how we did. There's gonna be a few steps. It's gonna be a little bit of an iterative process here as we go and, and see how these things work. And storm water and green infrastructure is another thing. We, we were awarded a sponsored project. It's loan forgiveness grant off of the SRF loan that you guys take out. We did get awarded that at 10% basically of that project cost, I believe. And so, as we move forward with these projects, we're gonna be incorporating green infrastructure, which will take that storm water and store it, attenuate the flow, infiltrate it into the ground, try to take as much of the storm water out of the combined system as we can, which either lessens the size or eliminates the need for some of the storm pipe, storm sewer pipe itself. And then, and as nice amenities for the community to have in the form of rain gardens or, or bio swales. More green, green stuff out there in town instead of all paved, so. These are features that we're looking for opportunities everywhere we can to incorporate these as part of Locust. We're, we're kind of partnering with the school right now, looking at, at a project there and looking at detention basin, rain garden type application out behind the school. And possibly, I believe, some permeable pavement up there. I think there's a few things that are still on the table with that that we'll be looking at, so. Those are things that we look for to incorporate. And these are just some of those ideas. Soil, soil quality restoration, rain gardens, curb cuts, infiltration basins, rain barrels, bio swales, detention. All those things are examples of green infrastructure. Can I slow down and go back through any of those pictures if you want, or if you're good? We probably wanna go home sometime tonight, I would imagine. The Market Street Lift Station, as I kind of mentioned, the current lift station capacity is 13 and a half million gallons per day. That does get inundated by Hawkeye completely when it rains heavily. When you get heavy amounts of rain, the Hawkeye Basin alone exceeds the capacity of that lift station. So, the, the force main capacity there is, is up to 26 million gallons per day. So, one of the options that we will be exploring is increasing the capacity of Market to handle a little bit more flow. Is that a possibility? Looking at the plant, and there's some things out the plant that can be done to maybe increase the capacity of the headworks of the plant and, and push some more water through there without really needing to expand treatment capabilities beyond what they already are. This is the existing Locust Basin. Go through real quick on these, because they're small and hard to see. This is the proposed sanitary sewer. A lot of sanitary in that basin that we're proposing to replace. Proposed storm sewer, in some cases, the storm is not of adequate capacity. And these are some areas that we'd be looking at putting in some new storm sewer also. Funding, as Nick mentioned, we applied for the CDBG grant already. Not everything was lined up as far as facility plan approval at that point and some other things, so we're gonna apply January 1 again for that. And the project at that point, when this next is basically shovel-ready, we have the 100% plans. Those will be going in for permit application very soon. And that's it.
Questions? Not from the audience, but questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the graphic pictures, Wildman. I was hungry before you began on all of that. I think I'll wait.
I, I saved you from the good ones.
Did you?
Yeah, the ones that would really ruin your appetite the rest of the week, so.
So, the work on this part is about a little over 5 million, or in that 5 million neighborhood for...
Yes.
Project costs.
Little over.
To do the next portions, the, the first draft of what we have for the remainder of the Mazel, construction costs in the 90 million range. Engineering would put it up around 110 million, be my guess, somewhere in that neighborhood.
I don't even know that number.
That, we can't afford to do that by 2025 with our existing rate structure. I'll give you a hint. So, this is one that we have, the state's, DNR is willing to work with us on, on timing. They've already expressed that. Now, the, the question is, is how much time are they willing to do? And we, we, as we start talking about this, you've mentioned, this isn't our only need within the system. We have a separate study that was noted in this presentation, the sewer master plan that the, we've already entered into a contract to, to have done. That's something you're spending, you're having a separate product being developed that's completely different from the Mazel work that's going on. It will take into account, though, what's going on with the Mazel project, but it's looking at our overall system needs and how do we make sure that we prioritize in what order we do it? So, as we move forward, I imagine that we'll have some discussions about, is the level of work that's being anticipated to be done with the rough draft of the facility plan for the next phases, is that the level of work that we need to have done on the Mazel? Is it, is it too, too much? Is it not enough? Where does that fit within, then as you start making adjustments to that, where does that change timelines on everything else that can or can't be done? This is not an easy discussion to have, and it's, it's just, part of it is, is it's too big a numbers. It's beyond our capability to think about over a five to 10-year timeframe as, and as you mentioned, needing a couple of decades to really adequately do this, to do it the way that's being proposed, and the other work that needs done within our system. My guess is, is that we're looking at a 30 to 40-year timeframe to try to work it in.
At least.
At least.
At least.
And that doesn't take into account, we have, we put no numbers to INI reductions in the Hawkeye Basin, some, some of the other areas. And we know that we need to look at doing some projects in those areas as well. And they all have an impact on the same ultimate goal that the, the DNR or actually the EPA is after. It's how do we make sure that we effectively put money into improving our infrastructure over a long period of time? And we're hopeful that they'll be willing to work with us, but it's gonna be a long
So, since they're trying to bankrupt us, you got any other good news you wanna say before we, before we let you go?
Well, the only good news is I won't, I won't let the cat out of the bag just yet, but there are some things that are possible that are moving forward right now that may have a huge impact on that bottom-line dollar amount that needs to be spent. And we're, we're H.R. Green in general. There's a couple of people from our offices and over in Des Moines that are working very, very hard with the DNR to get some of these things pushed forward and through the state. And if that happens, it's not all doom and gloom that there's gonna be, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars that are gonna need to be spent over the next 50 to 100 years working just on sewer infrastructure. There may be better ways to do it soon. So, the problem is, in the meantime, the good faith effort has to be made in order to show progress, that we're gonna do everything we can to keep things moving forward conservatively and hope that some of these other things...
Yes, conservatively.
Yeah, conservatively.
Yes.
And hope that some of these other things pop out. So, that would be the good news, but...
Appreciate you putting that little cherry on top.
Yeah, hopefully.
I needed that.
Hopefully, that will make you sleep better tonight.
All right.
Thank you. For the next few years. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Wildman, I appreciate it.
You ended on a positive note there. Did you notice that?
What are you trying to say?
Unlike some people like James, but anyway. Thanks for bringing that up, Jim, I appreciate it. Citizens Academy. Who's doing Citizens Academy?
I'm giving an update on that. Just wanted to give a update. We're looking at holding a Citizens Academy, moving forward with Burlington Citizens, Citizens Academy 2018. This is a city department-wide academy, aimed to get residents or citizens, more information on the background of what the city does, who we are, what we do, and why we do what we do. So, give some background, background and insight on the various city departments. So, so hopefully someone can walk away from this, being able to tell their friends, tell their neighbors, why the city does what they do in many instances. Looking at an eight-week course, starting February 15, Thursdays generally from 5:30 to 7:30, up until week eight, which would be April 2, having a council meeting graduation day. So, I'll just run through briefly the various weeks that will be held. The first is Intro to Government, History of Burlington, and Meet Your Mayor and City Council on February 15. Second is Public Works Tour of Buildings on February 22. March 1 Budget, how do we plan for improvements, bonds, state and federal taxes, property taxes. March 8, Library and Waterworks. March 15, Police and Fire. March 22, Development and Parks and Recreation. March 29, Wastewater Treatment Facility, and April 2, Graduation Meeting. So, we encourage people to go to our website. If you go under City Government, Boards, Commissions, and Committees, on the left-hand side, there's a Citizens Academy. Give some information, the outline of the Academy, some insight on what it is, as well as application. So, you can submit an application here. It will be limited, so we aren't able to just have 50 people in this group so that we can actually have some conversation and discussion and question and answer. So, it will be limited. If you're not able to get in this first year, hopefully this is something we can continue to do on a yearly basis and get more information out there on who we are and what we do and why we do it, so.
How many, how many in the first year?
Initially, looking at 10 to 15, depending on how many applications and how the setup is. So, might be some wiggle room there, but that's generally what we're looking at that first year.
And who processes the applications?
Come through, right now handled through, I think Tabitha and Katie are taking those applications.
And so, they'll, they'll be the ones that notify people, or do we, do you have to prove it, or are we proving people first, or...
Yes, we haven't.
We haven't really talked about that.
Haven't gotten to that.
You do that, when you do the Police Academy, it's, they do, you do that down internally with, within your department, don't you, Chief?
Correct, yeah, we have a committee we put together. They make those final selections. But normally, I mean, we allow that to all the 15, and we don't really have a whole lot of people that aren't eligible, if you will. I mean, most of the time, if we don't send them, they go to the number one on the list to follow.
Just looking at the applications here, some of the criteria, are you resident of the city of Burlington's one? Obviously, want citizens here. Are you, community activities? Are you currently on a city board, commission, or committee? are you currently on a city board, commission, or committee, something that could be valuable for some of those, any scheduling conflicts? We want people to be able to attend all eight sessions if possible, but don't want someone to be missed, going into it knowing they're gonna be missing three and not be able to attend those. So, those are some of the initial criteria and-
So, I guess the response would be, we're doing this off the cuff and trying to figure out what we're doing as we go along.
This is gonna be awesome.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, this is gonna be totally awesome. Yeah, this is gonna grow into something really huge.
Thanks.
You guys good?
Charlie and Tabitha kinda put this together and our department did some of the research on Davenport. It's gonna take off the Police Academy, but more on citywide, all departments, get to know all the departments in the city and what they do.
Do you get it, like, at the end of this, at the party, can we taze the city manager? Can we add that? Something to think about, something to think about.
No.
We're gonna move forward, I just want this to marinate. Number three, downtown parking, Mr. Renteria?
Eric Renteria, you guys all know me. The, I'm not sure that I have a whole lot to add to the parking discussion. You know, I've submitted a proposal to you on, on how I think that the parking might, might be improved. I have received feedback from several of you and, and certainly, certainly the, the fact that the decisions have been made and things have gone forward, it does have a role in this discussion. And, and while I'm, while I'm a skeptic about the, the solution, the interesting thing to me, as I read through the parking study again, was that the, the solution that came forward addressed, in my opinion, the challenges that were brought forward in the parking study. The issue for me, I think more, was that the, the parking study didn't accurately reflect the issues that we faced downtown. So, it's not a failing necessarily of the, of the process, I just think that there was some removal from, from the activity that takes place downtown that was a challenge to the study. So, you know, the, the two things that I think are, are the essential pieces to this are the, the psychological perceptions that exist regarding parking downtown. And those are, of course, one, that there, there's a perception that there isn't enough parking, and two, I think that the perception that, and it's, and it's a Burlington thing, that we have not adjusted to an urban lifestyle that we really need to, in order to, to make people understand that, that parking two blocks from your shopping place is, is adequate, and walking five blocks to get to your car from your home, if you live downtown, is also more than adequate. So, there, the, the things that I put forward are really designed to address those issues. You know, I, as I said before, the, my original idea was to just have free parking downtown everywhere, 'cause I still believe that there are adequate parking spaces, and we need to stop blocking out the parking spaces that are available and making them unusable, unusable to the majority of people. And the second part of it, I think, is addressed by the, the Snake Alley District and creating the perception that, much like you go to the mall, when you go to the district and you are there, you are within a reasonable distance from your shopping spot and, or dining, or whatever it is that you're going to do downtown, that is a reasonable distance. And we have to work on that, you know, from the emotional and psychological element that exists within, in Burlington. And as we, as we shift more and more to downtown residency, there are tremendous benefits to leaving the car and, and walking. And for those, like, for me, I go to Chicago quite a bit, and I walk an unbelievable distance throughout downtown Chicago, and it's just the lifestyle that exists there. Some of that has to come to Burlington as well. So, I, you know, what I really would like to, to get on the, on the agenda, and I, I love the signs, one is to, I, I think it's, I think it's gonna have to, the, the plan as it is, is gonna have to get some traction and some shoes and, and run its course. I think in the end, we're gonna be revisiting this in, in a, in a matter of a very short time, because we haven't addressed the three goals that were a part of the parking study. But on the second part of that, I think that one thing we can do is to identify the, the shopping district and move forward with that, and start to get in motion the emotional and psychological elements that will help make a transition to an urban living and shopping environment more acceptable. So, I, I don't know if you guys have any questions for me, but that was just kinda my, my take on it.
Good. I don't have a question, I just wanna say, I appreciate your passion and your concern for your community and downtown Burlington.
Absolutely.
And, and I encourage you to continue to, to let the big dog eat, let it out. I might not agree with it, but man, you can't, who could be mad about somebody that cares about their community, they're downtown, so I just wanna say, appreciate that. Thanks for coming down here.
Just to point out, Eric, you've got some, well, or Nick, I don't know who's-
Who's signs are?
Who's signs?
Who's signs, 'cause they're, they are nice-looking signs, I will say that.
No, I didn't put this in my card. Well, too big for the deal, I mean, take it down here and show you.
It's really pretty, Nick. Need to get a picture of Nick in front of that sign. He's very photogenic.
Don't trip over it, though.
He's quite photogenic.
Kicked the sign already.
So, as you can see here, this is the one for Nancy Nathan. We have color-coded on, based on the decisions that we've talked about, I don't know if you remember what they are. I think green is for hourly.
Yeah.
The ones, the orange for reserved, and then the blue is twenty-four.
Orange is twenty-four and the blue is, I can read it on the sign, blue is the reserved. It's a lot better than what we have.
We have number signs that go with these, and then along the color-coordinated ones that are just below the numbers. Might turn around here quick. Are you videotaping?
No, I'm gonna need to smile. Get a smile on my face, but I promise that.
Stephanie, would you give him some direction, please?
So, this was done originally through the, the chamber?
Yeah, the, the funding for the plan, I think through DPI and through the Chamber, Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission did the study, it was accepted by council in 2016. The signs were budgeted through the CIP process about a year ago. Looking at the differences in the parking lots, there was a survey sent out to the parking lot at Fourth and Valley, ninety-four percent of the residents there, that's a fully leased parking lot, ninety-four percent of the leases said they do not use the parking lot overnight. That was one of the findings of the study, and how do we better utilize our parking on a twenty-four-hour basis and allow visitors to functions downtown at night, or otherwise to utilize these parking lots that we have, not just from eight to five during the day for leaseholders, at least at twenty-four hours, but only use at eight to five, but allow, whether it's downtown residents or visitors to downtown, utilize that. So, that was one of the reasons to better, I guess, program our parking lots, or attempt to program our parking lots where there's twenty-four-hour users, there's the, worker users from seven-thirty to five, and then having it free after that time where visitors to downtown or coming down for events can park in those lots as well instead of just sitting empty.
The signage that you see is, oh, go ahead and-
And this will be, what, this will be on top of, I think it is configuration on top of the signs for each parking lot.
And then something that goes with these signs, the, the signage that you see here, the design of them isn't necessarily just for parking lots. The goal, when the, when the chamber was looking at this, was how do we have some coordinated signage that we can use throughout the community? And they were looking at the greater Burlington community when they talked about that. I don't know how, how much we're matching what West Burlington does with some of their signage.
The logo is based on that wayfinding study, that's a community-wide study, including West Burlington, that Burlington at the top.
I thought what they moved forward was gonna be.
Yeah.
And West Burlington is doing that as well. The colors are based on that wayfinding study, kind of matching the brick or reddish color for downtown, so this is based not only on the downtown parking study, but also on the wayfinding study.
The easier part of the study is coming up with the study and proposals. The harder part is having the time to install signs, having the funds to do signs, and, you know, this is one piece of it.
But we're gonna gradually keep-
But this is something that, a goal, to see this, have, have more things go on that, that match within this overall theme.
So, another component is having arrows to the parking lots, but also arrows from Roosevelt to downtown, from downtown to Roosevelt, to the Recplex. So, some of our key areas and destinations in the community are better identified, not just downtown parking lots, but all destinations in our community. And how do you get, do people in Roosevelt know there's downtown? Do people downtown know otherwise? And how do you get between these key areas? And that would follow the same color scheme and same design of Burlington.
Fort Madison's starting to do that. Fort Madison, so, there's that.
You wanna be more like Fort Madison?
That's not what I was saying, James. You missed the point entirely.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, we do, we're off-camera, before I tell you what I really think. Nick?
And so, the, the signs of this nature will be going up here, the larger signs, the identification of the signs of the parking lots will be going up. We should be getting posts back, supposedly it was today, but I don't think, we'll probably get them till tomorrow. And so, locates are already called in, so we'll be putting those up here this next week.
Cool.
So, you'll see those larger ones go up. We do have renumbering that will be going on, along with the color-coordinated, whether or not it's reserved or, or open for hourly parking. Those will be, take a little time to install, 'cause there's, I think upwards of three-hundred of them, and they're all different sorts of variations on how they're attached to the different parking structures that they're at. So, those will take a little time to switch out, but we wanted to get the big ones up, and our staff is doing that. So, the little ones, I, I don't know if you've come to a conclusion on how that's being done yet, so.
Be a combination of staff or having, having a contractor install some of those. There's some funds out of that budgeted amount to have some of those contracted to be put up.
Where'd we get you from? Go ahead, John.
I'm just gonna say, it's been a long time coming. You know, this issue, we've been battling since the seventies, the parking downtown and the perceptions, like Eric said, about, you know, you have to park in front of the merchants. So, I, I think this is a great first step, but you have my promise, Mr. Renteria, that in six months, nine months, it's not working, we'll, we'll keep working on it, to make sure that we're trying to maximize every parking spot we have down there. So, we'll, it's, I don't think it's gonna end, end it, but it's a great step and it's a great first step, so thank you. Those are outstanding, compared to the little, you know, I went, we went to the city tour, and I was with the tour with staff, and I pulled in that ramp by the PD, and those little signs, I mean, my eyesight's not great anymore, 'cause I'm older, and those little signs are like that, can't read, that I can read, I can read that. So, that's, that's great stuff, I'm very happy. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's big, it catches your eye, it, it draws you to that area to say, oh, what's this? Oh, it's parking, I can park here, instead of, where's the shop? There it is, I'm gonna park right here, or not park anywhere and go somewhere else. I mean, that's the big, that's, that's the big issue, is getting people to move. But, good job.
Well, alrighty then. Well, kids, we're down to number four. Does anybody have any problems with appointments?
No, I'm fine with all of those.
One of those is-
With the regional planning is, can you do that, that work session when you swear into members, or when is that? When you do a council appointment?
This is asking you to, one of the five people who's gonna be on effective January one, to have a willingness to go on in your place, and that, take action on it this next meeting, because you can't take action if-
Alright, so you guys.
Great.
I'm willing to serve if asked, or if needed, so that's not a problem.
We'll get her done.
Linda and Matt, is that okay if John serves on the Southeast Iowa?
Unless one of them would, would rather, I mean, they're both here, so one of-
It's for the trans-
Southeast Iowa Regional Planning meets once every other month, on a Thursday, at noon.
Sounds right if you're around it, John.
So, we just had a meeting in, in December, the next meeting's in February.
Okay.
So, we'll put your name on that?
Sure.
There's nothing stopping the ones from attending, correct?
No.
It's not all that exciting.
But you may like it. But you may enjoy it. Are we good then? Okay, Mr. Teslin, opposing remarks? Okay, council lady, Antoinette Wilson?
Yes, just a reminder that Living Windows is Thursday, the fourteenth, that's downtown from six to eight, and then, of course, Friday night art hop at the Art Center is going on this Friday. That's for kids, kindergarten through fifth grade, it's only ten dollars, and your kid gets a snack, gets to make some art, and gets a story, and that starts, and that's from six to seven-thirty, and then you can do whatever you want for that hour and a half.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Alright.
That's all I got, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Phillips?
Nothing on my end.
Okay. Who wants to do KBUR on Wednesday?
It's not as fun anymore.
With the new Rob Sussman? What's the new Rob Sussman's name?
David Hightower.
Hightower, that's your last name?
He's got a good, he's got a good name.
But anyways, we need two volunteers for-
I can do it.
You ready?
Nine o'clock.
I probably cannot.
Okay, did you wanna do one last one?
I can.
Jim, why don't we have you go out, you can break John in on a, on a radio show.
There you go.
Who better to break you in than Davidson?
Like his home turf.
Yeah, right, no doubt, no doubt.
Hey, did you wanna talk about Shop with a Call? That was this weekend?
I was just gonna ask him that.
Oh, are you?
No.
No, thanks for asking. That was a great day, we had a great turnout, all the kids, I mean, for the very most part made it, and, and we had a great day. It was, you know, it's really rewarding when you're out at the store and talking to the media a little bit at the time, and how thoughtful the kids are, you know, this rip at your heart, you know, I mean, they're out there and it's not about them, it's amazing how they're getting gifts for other family members, and, yeah, it was a real treat. Again, thanks, Matt, and the people from Two Rivers Bank were a huge help, and, and the wives that participated from the various departments to help wrap gifts at the end of the day, just to thank everybody, so it was a great day, and thanks for bringing it up, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
Alright. It's something I was just gonna, I seen, it just got, just got sucked away from my brain, so I'm gonna move on to you, if it comes back, I'll, I'll say it. Okay, Mayor Protem, nothing? City Manager?
Only a thing, I should've mentioned under the parking study, one of the reasons that I wanted to make sure that we had that brought up at this point, if we're gonna have a discussion about downtown parking, over the summer, you did, council committed to making efforts to provide parking for the potential purchase of two buildings in the downtown area, which is where we, we're looking at potentially buying the lot across from the, or renting the lot, or whatever we can get arranged across from the fire department. The developer there is, was looking to about a hundred, a hundred and ten units?
Hundred, yeah, a hundred to a hundred and twenty.
In those two facilities. They have not closed on that property, the, the main reason they haven't closed on that property, they're still waiting to see what happens with federal tax credits during, as the Congress comes, tries to come up with some level of reconciliation between the House and the Senate, one, one of the proposals did not continue the federal tax credits program. The other one did, although in a little bit altered form, but it was something that, if that form were to be in the final bill, would be acceptable to the developer, and they're, would look to close on the purchase. If they don't have the, if, if we were to wholesale change what we did with downtown parking, and make all the lots open, or without having the leases on them, that, if they knew that at this point, they would not close on that project. So, it was, to me, was very important that the council have this, a discussion and, and bring up and make sure everyone was still moving forward with, with what we're doing with the parking study, 'cause it would, I mean, that, that's just something that would close, would make sure that that deal didn't go through. And it may not be viable anyway, but that was one of those key things that was a showstopper for them. So, I did wanna make sure that I did bring that up as, as to why we had had that on to talk about tonight. And I didn't have anything else, does anyone else have something tonight? Otherwise, we're in the middle of meeting with the different departments last week and this week, to go over what their budget proposals are.
Get ready for the fun stuff.
We'll have fun, we need to get a, a schedule to you. We do that, either, either the work session right after Christmas, or right after that for meetings in, in January, and it'll likely be a lot of Thursday nights again, and, well, there is one free Monday, it won't be a free Monday now.
Woo!
So, we'll get to talk about budgets instead.
Alright.
That was it for what I had. That was it for what I had.
Okay. Linda Murray, you're here in green tonight. You got anything to say? Okay, Matt Rinker? We, we can't hear you.
The chief stole my.
I was going to have you come to the microphone.
I'm good.
Stop it louder. Okay. Alright, well, it's good to see you both tonight. We'll be, I'll just add two, one last minute thing. I forgot to mention is, we're trying to get 150 gloves and hats for, for preschool kids. And if you want to participate in that, I'm going to set up a box downstairs, I think, for the next, for the rest of this week. And you can bring them there. Also, there, there's going to be a box set up out, out at KCPS. You can drop them out, drop gloves and mittens out there. But it'll give you a chance to participate. You can buy really cheap. They're really super cheap. They're on sale, I think, at Menards, somebody said. But if you want a chance to participate in that to help some little kids keep their hands and their heads warm, that's something you can do. And just throw this out there, too. Also, if you want to go the extra mile, you can buy socks. It's a, it's a shame, but parents do send their kids to school during the winter time without socks. And what I'm going to do with the socks is I'm just going to divide them up between the schools and then the teachers, as, as the kids come in, they can send them to the office and, and get them some socks on, keep their ankles warm. If you want to participate in that, we encourage you to do so. I'll have a box set up down here. You can take out to KCPS. Nothing else? Okay, we're dismissed. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Stan. Thanks for coming.